Good evening, welcome to the September 20th, 2016 meeting of the Millis School Committee. Start by announcing that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. Start next with our roll call and go to my left, Sean Dory.
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Steve?
Present.
Jen?
Here.
Teacher representatives?
Here.
Hello. No student representatives. Denise Givens is absent tonight, under the weather. And Jody, anybody signed in for open session?
No.
All right. Then we will move to next item, action items. Consideration to approve the school committee minutes from July 21st.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalon.
I make a motion that we consider to re-approve the school committee meeting minutes for 7/21/2016, 7/27/2016, and 8/30/2016.
And move. Is there a second?
No second, sir.
Have you moved in second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next then, consideration to approve the 2017 trip to Peru.
No, we actually have executive session mark.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I did.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the school committee executive session meeting minutes for 7/27/2016.
Second.
Have you moved consecutive? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we'll move to the 2017 trip to Peru.
Hello, good evening.
How are you?
Good. I'm Nikki, Spanish teacher in high school. I am looking to bring a group of 27 students next April to Peru. We have had some really exceptional and successful trips with students to both Europe and Central America, so this will be the first trip to South America. And yeah, the students are very interested and very excited. I said there are 27 students and that would be four chaperones. The breakdown is six boys versus girls. There are six seniors, one freshman, and a huge group of juniors. The, do you all have a copy of the script?
We do.
Okay. So the main, the big points, I guess the highlights, we would fly into the capital, Lima, and spend a little bit of time there. And one thing that makes this trip really special is the community service component, which we've had little things in the past, going to schools, but we haven't really served in this way. So for two days, we're going to be living with an Andean community in little hut houses. And we're going to help them, they suggested perhaps building a greenhouse, but it could be working on something else. We'll find out when we get there. But, so yeah, I'm excited. It seems like it's a great way for the kids to really integrate with the community and get into the culture, use their language skills. And so the next thing that, well, is pretty huge is Machu Picchu. We're going to spend a couple days there. And towards the end of the trip, we're going to Lake Titicaca, which is the largest lake in South America. I think it has the highest altitude. It is probably known for the man-made islands that are created out of reeds and the natives live on the islands. And we're going to go spend some time there, too. So that's the gist. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, just on the altitude sickness, I was talking to some residents in Machu Picchu. How do you address that? Do you need to consult yourself?
Well, I've been so concerned about global affairs as far as like terrorism. I'm like, thank God, we're going here, we don't have to worry about it. And then Zika came and I'm like, oh my gosh, you know? But actually, it's the only country not affected, not that there's a relationship with kids, but yeah, so we don't have to worry about mosquitoes there. That's a positive, the high elevation. Besides that, it is pretty typical for people to get like an elevation sickness. And I think that there, there's something that people take. I don't know the specifics, but I'm just assuming we'll all take it.
Like when you're flying, you can take things?
Yeah. Yeah, but it's definitely like all tourists usually take it because it is a unique experience, very high and difficult.
Sounds fascinating.
Yeah.
I want to go. Suitcase.
Mr. Chair, so the State Department does a country kind of overview of all the countries for travel, for American citizens traveling. And I'm not familiar with what they're saying about Peru. Are there any concerns? I don't know if you've done that research yet. If not, we should definitely be able to direct parents to the State Department, not necessarily the company. Put them to the government agency and let them review and see what, if any, concerns that they have about Peru. I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea. I feel, I'm familiar with it just because last year was a difficult year with the international problems and we were going to Europe. So there were different alerts with terrorism. But no, right now, I feel like this is a good spot for us to be traveling where there's not too much going on. So it looks good and I'll continue to monitor that. But that's a good point.
My only question, kind of dovetails on that, too, is just, is there any, what kind of emergency response is available? Or if it's not, I was just glancing quickly through here and I didn't see anything that said, you know, included, provided.
Travel assist.
Is, travel assist, or so. If, if it's not included in here, that's another thing that I think would be good to identify.
It is included.
Okay.
This, that, I've been working with them for a long time. I don't, maybe six years. I've worked with a couple other companies as well, but we've developed a really good relationship. And partly why I'd like to continue this relationship is because I feel really confident as far as should anything happen, any disaster, any child's health, or, they are totally on top of things. They also have, you know, networks everywhere, not just in states. So I like that they have somebody from ACIS who'll be with us 24/7. I speak the language, but I don't know about culture in Peru. So thank God, we can count on this person to guide us through it.
Question?
Oh, good, enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalon.
I make, I make a motion to approve the 2017 trip to Peru that leaves, or goes from April 13th through April 22nd, 2017.
Second.
Have you moved in seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we have consideration to approve the paraprofessional contract, which has been running from 2016 to 2019.
Mr. Chair, this was approved in executive session on, at our last meeting, which was...
August 30th.
August 30th.
Yep. Just a couple of the highlights. The cost of living adjustment is 2%, each year for the next three years, which is within our normal growth rate of revenue and aid from, from the state and the town. Anybody have other questions?
Do we have to, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Catalon.
I make a motion to approve the paraprofessional contract that will covers, cover 2016 through 2019.
Second.
Have you moved in seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, Jody.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next, next is consideration, votes required for transfer of land for the MSB project.
Mr. Chair, I ask that the representatives from Compass Project Management join us to kind of give us an overview prior to the motion.
And this is, well, be part of, is part of the process as we lead up to the November town meeting, there'll be a warrant article in front of the town to approve, technically, I guess, approve the, that we request the state legislature to then approve of this land transfer, so.
Thank you, Mark. My name's Jeff Dennehy, I'm with Compass Project Management, the owners' representative, working with the school and the town to help bring you guys a new school at the elementary school. As Mark noted, yeah, there are many steps involved in this process to get us from the beginning to the end, where you can open up the doors to a new school. The next major step in front of us is to tee up the land transfers that will happen, both with a town meeting vote in November and then a submission that goes to legislators in January to then be shepherded through that state process. So the plan I have before you today is a color rendering of the way that the different parcels are chopped up on the existing campus. What you'll see in faint colors from where you're sitting is where we are today in the middle school, high school, is parcel 21, there's a gray outline of the existing building. And then here between parcels 118 and 18 is a light shaded, light shaded representation of the Clyde Brown existing school. All the colors you see here represent the municipal campus, which is comprised of varying entities within the town of who owns which and who controls which. So all these colors here are town parcels. What the purple represents is municipal, which is general use parcel, so that's the town hall under 116. And then about two-thirds of the soccer field on 119 are technically town general use parcels. All the ones in gray here are believed to be schools, so that's Sisto Field, the majority of the Clyde Brown school, the half of the parking lot in the back, the back stop there, and all the middle school and then the high school playing fields and the wooded areas believed to be school, but we'll circle back to that in a moment. The items in green here, which is the, all parcel 20 and parcel 18 are believed to be, after town council did deed research for us, to be under, protected under the parks regulations and is subject to Article 97 review. And so what we need to do there in conjunction with the town is to transfer the land and make a swap, if you will, to provide a footprint for our future Clyde Brown school. So through the spring and fall, the building committee along with several community forums decided on where the new school will go. I'll show you that and I'll circle back to this plan. So the new school is, is proposed to go adjacent to the existing school. So here's Clyde Brown in white and this is the existing middle high school. So between the two schools up on the wooded knoll, as it's known, would be where the new school is going, approximately in geometry, it's shown in dark red there. So as you saw on the slide before, there's a lot of different entities and ownerships there. What we're looking to do here is to carve out a building footprint where we can build our new school. And so we need to carve that out of the land that's currently protected from parks. And so the area in red with the driveway in off of Park Road and then taking all of 18 and carving out a section of 20 is the area that we would like to take out of the parks control and give to the school. And swap for that, what we're offering back, should it get through all the approvals, is the Sisto Field, the backstop area, soccer field, and then the wooded wetlands area, as well as some of the meadow practice fields in this area here. So none of the uses will change in those green zones, it's simply an internal transfer of ownership from one town hat to another. Unfortunately, we have to go through these steps just because of the way it was transferred prior, since 1955, when it was given to the parks department from the school department. We're now kind of reversing that and swapping around other entities within town. Everything shown here in color, whether it's beige, red, green, will still all be ultimately town owned, but it's just which hat the town's wearing as it relates to the actual parcelization. So what's going to be before the town at fall town meeting is roughly this plan, which is to offer up the areas in green for the taking in red. And the reason for that is that generally the Energy and Environmental Affairs Office from the state would like to see a two-to-one replication and they also want to see replication in decline. So we initially offered up the three playing fields and that was a pure one-to-one stop, a swap. And what the EEA requested back was we'd like some more land, as well as we'd like to see some land that's kind of similar in terms of its nature. So the existing nature of the area we're taking is a wooded area. And since the area down here is a wooded area and a wetlands, it doesn't provide much use for the schools today, but does meet the needs of what the EEA would like us to provide to them. So the proposal before you tonight is to modify the swaps from just these three parcels to add in approximately 40% or so of parcel 53 and then a small chunk of parcel 21. Ultimately, at the end of this process, should everything go smoother town meeting with the EEO, the final parcelization will look something like this. So the area in green here would be ultimately what is under the parks department control through the Board of Selectment. And the area in red would be the new parcel for the Clyde Brown. And the area in brown would be the remaining parcel for the middle high school. And important to note, these two would be light uses, they'd both be controlled by school, but for graphical purposes, I've colored them differently just so it was easier for you guys to digest. What that looks like on an aerial map, because we're all used to seeing textures, is to overlay that area here, again, those same shapes of that wetland and the wooded area with the playing fields for practice, the soccer field, the backstop, Sisto Field, and this middle spot is the remaining existing portion of parcel 20 that will stay under parks control. So the areas in red dashed would represent what's given to the control of the parks department. Everything not dashed would be under the school control department.
One question, just, I think I know what it is, but in the field behind the Clyde Brown, that extension out to Main Street, that's a walkway, that's not a road, right?
This, this spot here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a walkway. So there's like, is, is six fingers or so, some are pathways for vehicles, some are not. These two are walkways, this is a vehicle, this is a vehicle, this can be a vehicle, vehicle and a vehicle. So there are varying numbers of tentacles.
Mr. Chair, I thought the, I thought the Clyde Brown was already town controlled.
Correct. It's town control, but not parks control.
Oh, I see.
There's a nuance there that, right now it's deemed general municipal, so it's controlled for any use the town may have. We'd give it to the use of, for parks use, it would be a different designation.
My other question is to the, the area down at the bottom right end, the woody, grassy, watery area.
Sure.
We spent a number of years trying to get fields here in town. Would that affect any future attempt to build fields up at that, at the middle high school campus?
You're referring to?
Yes.
Just this section, not, not the national plan and looked at reorientating the baseball diamonds and the, and the track?
Right.
You're talking about the soft space?
Well, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how, if that impinges on, on the plan.
I'm just pointing out that we are talking about just the border of the wetlands on the left, there are not any of the buffer, so in answer to your question, no, it doesn't impinge on any, because you can't develop in the wetlands anyways. So what we're talking about transferring on that left there is strictly the border of the wetland.
Right.
No buffer, no buffer zone or anything else that allows you to develop.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions? I'm, you want a motion?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Jody?
Listen carefully.
I will, I can send this, I can type this up and send it to you because it is...
Very specific.
It's very specific because it's going to, it's for the state. If you want to write, you can, but I'll send it to you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Catalon.
I'm going to make two motions.
Okay.
Because, and I'll explain why I'm making two motions, just because there is a question on, can you, can you put the map where the numbers are? Just go back to the graphical map with the numbers. So there's a question on whether 53 is truly school controlled. It's on, it's on the paper as town controlled. But we've also found other, other school controlled lands that were said, it said town, but they truly were school. So I'm going to make two motions.
Because we have, we have council now looking into...
Yes. So we're going to vote, and so one will cancel out depending on who is the true ownership. But this is the, we need to do this prior to the selectment on Thursday.
Okay.
So it'll be contingent, but...
Will that answer be found by Thursday?
I don't, I don't think they're going to have it by Thursday. So we're going to do the same thing with the selectment, we're going to have two motions. As you, as you hear, the motion is sort of basically says, if it is, you're approving something, if it is under your control, they'll present it, if it is under their control, one of them will cancel out once we find out.
Contingent, I agree.
Yeah. Yes, okay. We're good?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we authorize the transfer of parcels 11, 19, and a portion of 21 as depicted on the plan entitled Proposed Plan, Proposed Land Swap, dated 9/14/2016, to the Board of Selectmen, acting as the Board of Park Commissioners for the purpose of effecting the Article 97 transfer necessary to allow the siting of the new Clyde Brown school.
Second.
And move consecutively. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
The second motion is, I ought, I make a motion to authorize the transfer of a portion of parcel 53 as noted above, should town council determine said parcel is under school control.
Second.
Actually, I have to continue. So that would be transferred to the Board of Selectmen, acting as the Board of Park Commissioners, for the purpose of effecting the Article 97 transfer necessary to allow the siting of the new Clyde Brown school.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
For the ease of your records, would it be good for me to put this in an email and send it to one of you guys to send it over?
That would be perfect. That would be very helpful. And, because you don't send it, things over until tomorrow, right?
I usually, well, I can send it at any time. I usually like to do it in an instant, just so I can...
But we took them out.
I don't mind reading it out now.
Oh, if you, whatever you want to do. Is this, based on our conversation with town council, is this going to be sufficient enough for going into Thursday night?
Yes, yes, yeah.
We're good?
Yep. It's really, again, sufficient enough to go to town meeting, too.
Okay.
Well, these people won't get authorized until their next meeting, so what I capture in here tonight...
We took two votes and then depending on what the opinion from town council, whether we have to do the 53.
Yeah. I would suggest...
Yeah, her point was just that it becomes official at your next meeting when you go into...
That's right, that's right.
We'll have them before town meeting.
Yes, yes.
We'll make everything legal.
That's correct.
Okay.
People good?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to take a second to thank you guys. I don't think you've been to our meetings in public since this process, or maybe one at the most, but the amount of time and service you guys have been providing to the employee school, the elementary school building committee, and to us behind the scenes has been tremendous and...
I appreciate it.
You're very dedicated and plays and do it excellent.
There's a lot of dedicated help on the town side as well.
Thanks, guys, thank you.
All right. I'm going to grab this and I'll move in. No student representatives? Teacher representatives? All right.
Good evening. At the Clyde Brown School, September 25th, the Homeschool Association will be sponsoring the Clyde Brown Run Back to School. On September 26th, the Scholastic Book Fair will happen all day long at the Clyde Brown School. So I have a note here that says it's October 6th, so perhaps it's running through the 26th to through the 6th. The first grade open house will be on September 26th from 6:00 PM until 7:00 PM. The third grade open house will be on the same evening, September 26th from 7:00 PM until 8:00 PM. On September 28th, grade two open house will be from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Grade four open house will be from 7:00 PM until 8:00 PM. And on October 3rd, the kindergarten open house will occur from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Clyde Brown. October 20th will be picture day all day at Clyde Brown School. In the middle school, the book group has held signups for grades five through eight. It continues to go on. Their first meeting will be at the school library on Tuesday, October 11th, and it will occur at 2:30 PM. You can see Mrs. Diva to sign up. And the middle school open house is this Thursday, September 22nd, beginning at 7:00 PM. The high school had their open house last week. They have an inauguration meeting for parents and students this Thursday evening. That's where the trip going to be in operation in January. And that meeting will occur at 6:00 PM. The teachers involved are Missi Embo and Miss Melo. We have had the Dutch exchange students here this week and they delivered an interactive presentation on Monday to the student body. They compared and contrasted the education in Dutch and American cultures. And they also participated in an amazing race on Saturday that was run by high school volunteers. Representative Kennedy's youth cabinet met here in Milis this past Saturday. And Milis has two students serving on Kennedy's cabinet. They are seniors James Schultz and junior grade Steve. Next week is spirit week at the high school, and that's hosted by the student council. And next Tuesday, September 27th, is also National Voter Registration Day. And Missi Embo is running a voter registration drive all week after today.
Thank you very much. Next, the superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair, we have had a very good opening to the schools. We have 60 students who are new to the Milis Public Schools, having moved here from elsewhere, 20 at the Clyde Brown, 23 at the middle school, and 17 at the high school. Overall, our enrollment is down from last June by 41 students in district and five fewer students are going out of district. We currently have 70 choice students and we will continue to uncover more. We want to once again let parents know that if you move out of Milis, you just need to let us know your address, but because you have a spot, your students, your children have a spot as students in the Milis Public Schools, you are allowed to continue as choice students. And that is beneficial financially to the district, so just let us know if you're changing address. All elementary classes are in the 18 to 21 student range, with most of them 17 to 18. We did learning walks at the elementary school this morning and got into first, second, and third, and fourth grade classes and were very impressed by what we saw. We have nine English language learners, four from Brazil, two from Italy, one from Haiti, one from Russia, and one that speaks Arabic. We welcome them. We also welcomed our Dutch exchange students this week. We've had a full day of professional development on August 29th, the first day back for, for teachers, focusing on universal design for learning. And a follow-up day on September 14th, you have some handouts in your packet to refer to that, where teachers are using the CAST website and the principles of universal design for learning to design project-based learning units. And at Clyde Brown, they're taking their, one of the new science units, next generation science units, or aligned to the next generation standards, and incorporating project-based learning as well as increasing goal setting by the students. So the, it's been excellent professional, job embedded professional development. The grants, the federal entitlement grants that we receive are overall a couple of thousand dollars more than last year, not a large gain. And we will be getting our circuit breaker numbers soon. In special education, we have 183 students with individualized education... In special education, we have 183 students with individualized educational plans, which is 13.6% of our population. 18 of these are out of district placements, and that is five fewer than last year. One graduated, one student graduated, four returned to the district. We did have one student move into Milis this week with an out of district placement as well. Our school safety task force has met twice with the acting police chief, fire chief, school resource officer, and school personnel to further discuss and address the safety precautions and protocols and procedures that we have in place, and we are moving forward on several of those recommendations. So, overall, there has been a lot going on, and I'd like to introduce the new director of operations. We're very pleased to have John Engler join our staff, and John comes to us with 20 years of experience as the facilities director at the Xfinity Center, and has, prior to that, more years of experience managing facilities at the old Gillette Stadium. And we, John's been doing an excellent job, so I'd like to invite him to come up and give us a little update of what he's been up to in the past couple of weeks.
Hi. I know, I'll talk to you. Good evening. It's been an interesting task, three weeks, that's for sure, learning both schools. I have been meeting up with, able to meet up with the chief of fire as well, to go over some protocols, to discuss our communications, and see where we can enhance that if possible. Learning, meeting with the staff, trying to find out everyone's needs, understanding the regular process of the football schools. It's been a challenging couple of weeks, but at the same point, still meeting contractors, still meeting, besides contractors, reaching out to other vendors I can deal with, and just introducing myself, pretty much finding out what we get from them, and hopefully if, you know, do some cost comparison, learn our number. It's been, it's been interesting. It's, it's been very nice. Everyone's been, been greeting me with open arms, so I'm not quite sure when that, when I'm putting you in the lead, but hopefully it'll continue.
Welcome. Thank you. In advance.
Mr. Chair, I will not put you on the spot now, but at some point, after you have finally kind of had enough time to kind of review both buildings and what's going on, I would like to have John back to the, to the school committee to kind of give us an overview of the state of the buildings. And clearly, one building is in a different, different place than this other building, but it would be very helpful for us to know your fresh eyes and your perspective about the state of these buildings and what we need, not just in the short term or immediate, but also what are we, what are we looking at long-term around building facilities? We don't have a lot of money, so we have to be very strategic and plan and be thoughtful about how we approach things, but at some point in the next few months, after you've really had a good opportunity to kind of learn the ins and outs of the buildings and walk them yourselves, but I'd like you to come back and give us an overview of the buildings.
And expand it beyond the kind of physical or capital needs, just also staffing, maintenance, kind of all of what, what's going, you think we have enough of, where are we short on things, sort of things that we could shift around, kind of, basically a capital plan and, and ideas for maintenance, because I think that's one of the long things, especially with this building, that we need to make sure we're staying on top of, or at least we're aware of what we're selectively choosing to not address immediately, if anything.
Welcome, John.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Up next, in terms of, want to, we had mentioned at our last meeting that we would do this, review the articles that we submitted. All of these were submitted to the Board of Selectmen, all 12 that we had voted last time. Since our last meeting, I was able to get a hold of exactly what, right now, is on the warrant. I emailed everybody this afternoon so that people could review. I think it was fairly evident that, that the articles, what articles have been submitted and what the selectmen have put on really are not a lot of capital needs. There's one, I think really only one capital need, and that was actually a, a capital request, and then actually a citizen's petition, not a department. So, unlike past Novembers, when many things were put up for capital, you know, the one we only use an example is, you know, the police cruiser, if not police cruiser, up there, those kind of routine revolving requests are there. So, they really honed it to emergent needs and non-budgetable needs stuff. So, in looking at that, from my perspective, I think there's probably two things that, that would be consistent with what is currently on the warrant, probably the Clyde Brown roof analysis and repair, and the replacement of the intercom, because that was tied to the after-action report. The Clyde Brown roof analysis, I spoke to Nancy earlier today, we're still holding out on the last minute tweak, if we usually have prevailing wage in our bid, so it's probably worth leaving that on. If we do get a final number between now and then, we can always acknowledge to the finance committee that we would request dismissal and we'll take care of it ourselves. But the other items on here that are becoming annual in nature, probably would be better suited for me. So, I guess I would open that up. My, my recommendation would be that we take a vote to request the selectmen not put on this list, items one through five, and seven through 10, and number 12, if those all be removed from our request. They're gonna entertain our list on Thursday evening, so they haven't voted one way or the other on anything we put forward. They're doing that on Thursday, so this would be a good opportunity for us to pare that down if we choose to, and then a couple of them.
Can you say that again, what your thoughts were?
I would leave, I would leave the roof repair, and I would leave the intercoms, and everything else I would, I think is more in line with what they've now shifted to only in that.
Mr. Chair, I go back to what our conversation on August 30th, the roof repair is less than 25, or at 25,000, I think we should self-fund that. I am in favor of leaving it on in case the prevailing rage puts it way over the top, but I would like to asterisk that one, that we're ready to pull that off, as you said. I, I, I'm in favor of that as well.
Yeah, and I think it, it wouldn't necessarily be need to be pulled off as much as if they put it on Thursday night, then it just stays. If it then gets admitted to the finance committee, we just request of the finance committee that they recommend a dismissal due to the fact that we've got a final bid and that we'll be taking care of it on our own resources.
I'm supportive of that. And I'm supportive of keeping on the intercom. That was tied, as, as, as the Board of Selectmen, Mr. McCaffrey asked us, what are we going to do? He goes, we have an after-action report, we have to do something on. This is something that they can do. The other piece was mostly policy and operations. This is more of a, a capital need that, for a system that, to be clear, the system does work, it's clunky, and if it goes down, it takes a while to get it back up, but we're not without an intercom system, but clearly one that could be replaced and upgraded and etc.
Correct.
I do not think, Mr. Chair, if I may, the 12,000 is really a repair number, not a replacement number. I think if we were to replace it, it would be significantly more expensive.
So, let's keep it as a repair.
Yeah, so I should just say repair of the intercom.
Yes. Trying to, I go through there.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCaffrey.
You good?
I, I make a motion that we remove articles one through five, seven through 10, and 12 on the previously agreed-upon list from the August 30th meeting, leaving article six, which is the Clyde Brown roof analysis and repair in the amount of 25,000, and leaving on the repair of the intercom phones in middle school classrooms in the amount of 12,000.
Sorry.
Okay. I, I think we also have a couple of options in terms of, one of, the idea we talked about too is keeping these things in the forefront of people's minds. I think, well, I know that this list was also passed on to the finance committee last week, so they've already seen it. We also, there's nothing stopping us from taking the full list and including it as a handout at town meeting to say, here are the things that we didn't put on, but are still needs and will be needs going forward.
Mr. Chair, I guess just a few things about that. I totally agree with the handout. This is a clear picture of what we need. Before our May town meeting, though, we're having a special town meeting for Clyde Brown and changes there, and so I think going into that meeting, we need a clear picture of what the need is for that school and what the option is, which we're preferring to build a new school. We also have this list, these are some of our needs, and then Mr. Engler's working on an assessment of our needs, so we need a clear picture for the voters of everything we need. And Clyde Brown's immediate, but what's our timeline for the rest of these items?
Yeah, well, I mean, our timeline is, we put them up in May, these plus others that we, that'll either come up or that we have already edited off this list. I think, you know, as part of our, I think we've had, have had some capital piece, and especially like the auditorium items here, it would be helpful to know, if you don't, I think we have, we're just putting on here, exactly the status of them, and do we, is it, do we need it today? Do we need it? We also had some conversations prior to the current former town minister to leaving about, are these things something that we should be having joint discussions with, jointly funded, or funded as not a school item versus a, you know, municipal department item, but given the fact that this is-
Audio, video.
Right. So, audio, video, town meeting and other, and any other, you know, large public meeting, all large public meetings are held in the auditorium, that, that really, so that piece of the conversation.
Mr. Chair, we also, as part of the MSBA process, we do have the cost of doing nothing. We actually have legitimate costs, I mean, millions of dollars, and that would just be on the cost upgrade.
Right.
It doesn't mean we have to do it overnight, but there's a phasing there, so, I mean, we do have that cost, and that's a, that's a strategic conversation that we need to have in the run-up of that process next, with that special town meeting and special election of how do we frame this conversation. But we do have those, we do have the overall cost, and then we can-
Right.
Piece it down.
Right. Check to verify, know the impact of our law and the benefit of the cost of things, so they might be at the end of our useful life for other items beyond Clyde Brown and beyond what's on this list.
Mr. Chair, may I make one slight correction for number 11? There are some high school classrooms that might need repair, or areas in the high school area downstairs here that need, need an intercom, that currently don't have one. So, it reads currently as middle school classrooms, I'd like to expand that to high school and high school areas. Yeah, I think so.
Do you need to amend, can I amend my motion, or do I have to do a big motion? I'm amending my motion to include high school classrooms and areas on item 11. Is that right?
I have a motion in a second, would you all vote?
No, we haven't.
Any other comments, upstairs? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious, Mr. Dory, what your concerns are on our conversation, just so we can understand your perspective and-
Well, I think that these are items that need to, need to be done, and I think that we keep playing a game where we don't put things on that are desperately needed, and I think that the more we get it in the public view of these repairs that are needed, the better off we'll be.
Yeah.
I think we agree with you, we're just following the, the timeline of all the towns talking.
Do as you please, and I'll do as I please.
All right. Next is subcommittee report, school building committee. Anything more than what we-
There is a meeting next Wednesday in town at the MSBA.
Motion.
Yes, in Boston, which is a follow-up to the August meeting where we presented the PSR, was presented, that was the meeting that Nancy presented, as well as Tappahay, and that will be, they listed a bunch of questions, which is part of the process and wasn't specific to us. We have answered those questions, and the process of answering those questions, and then this becomes a vote of the facilities assessment committee, yes, facilities assessment committee, which basically is the subcommittee that moves it forward and puts it in line for the full, the full vote, or this may be the full vote. There's a, there's another vote that has to take place next week, and then, and they looked favorably upon our application and our answer of their questions. So, this is just part of the process. It is every, every applicant has to go through it, and we are in, we're making motion in that, in that direction. Other than that, but clearly the 97, the Article 97 is an issue, there will be a, at a minimum one community forum prior to town meeting, which will outline and give the residents an opportunity to come in and ask questions, and basically a public forum. And there will be literature that will be, will be written up and presented as well. If you want to know that, one of our honorable meetings.
Is there any idea when that might be?
We have not set a date yet. We, we're, we're gonna work on that soon.
Okay.
And we can have, we'll have the forum, but we can also do the presentation here as well, as we've done in the past.
Yeah, we can do that on either the 18th or November 1st.
Realistically, I'm thinking it's November 1st.
That's fine.
That was it, sorry.
All right. Correspondence, we have a letter from the Charles River Corral, who has grown out of our auditorium, so they will be not utilizing the auditorium for our conference this year. However, they, they own the risers in the auditorium, so they're right now leaving them here, as they decide what they're gonna do for them. The last comment is in here is if we'd be interested in accepting a donation. The last comment in here is if we'd be interested in accepting a donation, I would certainly be willing to accept a donation.
And, Mr. Chair, I did check with the music and department, and we would be very pleased to accept their donation of risers and appreciate their generosity in doing so. We also will miss having their performances in our auditorium, and they, Brooks Coral, when I met with him, was very gracious and insistent that he was, they all were very grateful to us over the years, but they, our stage is just too small now.
I spoke with him as well at the scrimmage, he does the football, so I was filling him in on some stuff, and he's very sad to go, but he said, there's just no room?
Next, and then, school committee announcements. John?
No.
Steve? No.
I don't have any. Sean?
No thanks.
All right. We don't have any other business, but we do have executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations for the custodians and transportation unions for their 2016 to 2019 contracts. We will not be returning to open session, so I obtain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we move into executive session, not to return to open session for contract negotiations for the custodians and transportation contracts.
Roll call vote? Second roll call vote. Sean?
Yes.
Yes, Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.